Are there any other nominations for moderating? If not, I declare the nominations closed and Mr. Milcovic is elected by proclamation.
Thanks, Joan. Thanks for electing me your moderator in this participatory democracy tradition we have here in New England of town meetings. Secondedated. Okay. The notice for the meeting signed by the town manager and the town clerk was posted on the town signpost on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, and copy thereof was published in The Chronicle, a newspaper of general circulation in that our town, in its issue of Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. In accordance to section 7-6 of the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut, it's amended, only an elector of the town or a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more who jointly or separately was liable for town for taxes assessed against him based on an assessment of not less than $1,000 or more on the last completed grant list of the town, or who would have been so liable if not entitled to an exemption as a blind person or as a veteran, or as a parent of a surviving spouse of a veteran, would be entitled to vote in this annual town meeting and the adjourned annual town meeting. So everybody should have signed in when you came in appropriately, and anybody who isn't voting should be sitting in the two rows over there that are marked with the white paper. Okay, item one, to hear the town council's estimate of expenditures for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018. And I call on John, Joe Lewis, Chair of the Town Council to do the town presentation.
Be the town manager.
Oh, the town manager. I call on Donald Sessom, the town manager, to do the presentation.
It's my pleasure to be here tonight, once again, to present the budget for the proposed budget. The budget that's presented to you was forwarded unanimously by the town council. We all know it's been a interesting year with the state budget being so late. So we deferred our traditional spring budget until the state enacted their budget. Did give the town council a couple times to make adjustments from the initial presentations, and we're trying tonight to show you the changes that have been made and what is being forwarded to the referendum after this town meeting if it's not adjusted. So I'm trying to find a spot where not standing in the middle of things. So it's always good to know kind of where your money goes. If you take the total budget, it's broken into four pieces, debt service, the town operating budget, capital budget, and the education budget. You can see the town budget's a little less than 24 percent, but the board of education budget's a little over 67 percent. Debt service has 6.8 percent. About six or seven years ago, that was over 10 percent, so we've been declining on our debt service. And our capital budget is 2.3 percent. Couple highlights on this. The proposed budget is $236,827, or 0.6 percent less than last year's adopted budget. So in the almost 30 years that I've been here, this is the first budget that has really been a significant decline over year-over-year budget. So where did the changes come from? To get that 236, down the bottom, we have education budget decrease is $96,681. In some places, you'll see another $40,000 in there because there's a supplemental appropriation for special ed money last year, but from the adopted, original adopted budget, it's $96,681. Town decrease is $68,126. Capital decrease, $35,000, and debt service decrease, $36,000, to get to that 236. So you see that every portion of the budget went down. But in, in June, a mill rate was established, which called for a .8 mill tax increase. Last year, there was zero tax increase, and a .8 mill increase was to offset two years of state aid cuts. And we went to 32 mills. The budget that's being proposed tonight, and again, setting forward, will require no supplemental bills. I know over the last several months, there's been a lot of discussion about potentially supplemental bills. The council was able to work with the Board of Ed cooperatively to get down to that 32-mill rate by making additional reductions. So again, our spending decreases 0.6 percent. But again, 32 mills that was billed last year, you will not be getting, last fiscal year, for July 1st, you will not be getting any additional bills this year. The breakdown of how we got to that 0.6 percent, you know, went through that column down the bottom of the various decreases, but let's look at the revenue side of the picture. Property taxes went up, that's $798,512, or 2.6 percent, that's that .8-mill increase plus a very, very, very modest grant list growth. Intergovernmental revenues, mostly state aid, a decrease of one, lots of ones. So over a million dollars, over $1.1 million worth of reductions in state aid from year to year. We have not taken any money out of our fund balance, and our local revenues, we're able to increase slightly by $76,000. So point out that property taxes went up $798,000, state aid cut was over $1.1 million. So I don't think we need to point out a lot of why you had a property tax increase. It's because this number was reduced so much year-over-year. So by getting, you know, the increase here and adding that, you can see where you get that 1.1 million. So we increased that .8 mills plus the grant list growth, and we had to cut to make up for that. So I thought it was important, because there's a lot of history here to go through, kind of show the first round that we talked about in April, the original budget. The town was going to be cut $50,000 over the initial request. The Board of Education was going to be cut $1.2 million. That's also confusing because they played around various versions of special ed money. It's a grant called excess cost. At one point, it wasn't separated, it was rolled in, so it had to be included in their budget request over here. So that's about $766,588. Council then cut $250,000 through negotiated savings in oils and health insurance, and then asked the Board of Ed to come up with another $215,000 for the cuts. And they'll go through where those changes were. Debt service was minus $21,000, and capital was minus $62,000 in the first round. We also had proposal for the state for us to pay teachers retirement, which was originally 1.3 million, 1.35 million. Council didn't think that that was going to happen all at once because they're getting indications it might be phased in over five years in the first budget, and this is, you know. So the council thought that it was going to be more than 271,000, and that's what they were going to send to the budget, and why is it? Guess they don't use the laser pointer. So ultimately, that was reduced to be all together, at least for now. There's a committee studying how that's going to be funded, but, so there was a $2.4 million swing from what the original requests were. Round two, looking at our budget and taking actions, both agencies did spending freezes and hiring freezes, and on the town side, we're able to negotiate with three of our four unions that didn't have contracts to get a six-month wage freeze. So the town was able to suggest additional reduction of $63,000. We looked at some debt service issues, and I'll get into that a little bit later, but we were able to take another $29,000 out of debt service, and through a joint meeting, the Board of Ed offered $136,681. Capital was left alone because that was already cut fairly deeply the last time, and then the teacher retirement came up because the state did not require that. So an additional $501,980 came out in the second round. So putting it all together, reductions from the original budget request of almost $3 million. Significant changes in relation, some of that also was, you know, what the state was going to require us, understand that, but a $3 million reduction from where we started. So looking at the town side of the budget, personnel, again, personnel was reduced due to wage savings and some spending freezes, and personnel also includes health insurance. We were able to take a 7 percent reduction in health insurance because our self-insurance plan is working well. $155,000, so 2.2 percent reduction in personnel. Contractual is up. Some of those are insurance, other property casualty insurance, and capital spending within the operating budget is up, but it's a very modest number. And utilities is up a little bit also. Where it goes by function, general administration, and going down, sundry, this is where that health insurance is, so it's a big number. So civic and cultural is the library and human services, recreation. You see public works is basically a Stabs quote budget, inflationary increase. A lot of this money is for trees and road salt. We have an ash light, so we'll get into some of the changes in a minute, but that's how the town budget is modified from year to year. So where do we get our revenues? Our revenue decreased $991,000 this year, plus some cuts last year. Property tax, we'll bring that 798 more, but revenues went through a lot of this already. The .8-mill rate is equivalent to a 2.6 percent tax increase again, after a year of zero tax increase. A grant list growth was only 0.2 percent. We're starting to see impacts due to crumbling foundations where the state allowed property owners who have that horrible issue to come in and get a property tax assessment reduction, so they pay less in taxes, but that frankly means everybody else has to pay more. So the tax increase is less than the state revenue cuts, and I have to say, if you've been reading the paper, it's highly unlikely the state's going to make it through this year without additional mid-year cuts like we had last year. Actually, this afternoon, we got some information that they're starting to talk about holding money back. It's not quite a cut, it's a hold, and we're still trying to get information on that because I don't believe the governor has authority to do that at this point, but we'll start talking about that. But we know it's coming, so as we look for it, we're going to have to figure out strategies to even bring this budget in like we did last year. And last year, we had mid-year cuts, and actually, at the end, what do we have? We had $39,000. So I don't think all the council members know, we announced it on finance, we were actually able to bring in last year's budget with a $39,000 surplus in spite of a $441,000 cut. Now, it's due to diligent management by all parties, so, you know, we'll have to look at those strategies again. So median household. Median household is assessed at $144,970, 70 percent, has a market value of about $207,000. Median household means half the houses are above and half the houses are below. So you can kind of do it proportionally to where you feel your house is, but that .8-mill increase is equivalent to $116 annually, or $9.66 per month, and it breaks down, the pie chart breaks down where the money goes. The town portion of budget is $1,100 or so. Capital budget is 107, and debt service budget is 315. Education's the 3111. Within the town operating budget, that $1,100 of $4, you can kind of see where your money goes, $288 to public safety. This whole presentation will be up on our webpage, if, there's a few copies in the back, but again, the town side of budget's 23.8 percent of the total operation. So major budget impacts, building repairs, software licenses, IT contracts. We're trying to get an extra two hours of service right now. We contract with the town of South Windsor, who provide services to Tolland, us, and South Windsor, and we only, we only have two part days a week, and that's just not cutting it for us these days, so we're trying to increase that. That's a significant increase in our budget. You mentioned tree removal, $10,000. That's probably about 15 trees. Drive around town, I think we have 15 trees on Tuckahill Road, ash trees that need to be taken down. Ash trees are dying. If you drive around town, and it's not the Emerald Boar, it's another issue, and Jim Barta could...
I'm over here.
Boom. Jim Barta could tell you in great details that it might be plate, it might be other things, but they're just not doing well, and we have a lot of them in the town right-of-way. So it's going to be a major issue over the years. One of the big initiatives that we have is for our volunteer fire department. If we want to have a strong volunteer fire department, we need to have new members that are trained. The state over the years has cut the training reimbursements and cut subsidies to state fire schools. Good news is, we have people who want to join the fire department and be trained, but we've got to put money in to make sure that they know what they're doing so they're acting safe. So there's $7,000, even within the reduction budget that was such a priority for us, we put in money, and the council approved money to go to fire training. Same thing, we're ready for a sergeant's exam. We do an assessment process where we bring in outside examiners, not just a written test, and Chief Palmer is here tonight, he'd be glad to probably talk to you after the meeting if you want to learn a little bit more about that process. But it's a, it's a significant process because there are very few openings for police sergeants, and you have to make sure that everyone feels it's a very prudent and fair process to go through. On the supply side, we're able to cut gasoline and diesel a little bit. We had to increase salt. Last year, we, once again, we're running low on road salt. And claims and losses, which are deductibles and uninsurance and, I'm sorry, unemployment claims, we've been running a little short on that, so we need to increase that. So good news. Mentioned the health insurance already. Very strong. Our pension is also strong. We were able to reduce some of our pension expenses in the budget and still pay the actuarial requirement, and we're now 85.5 percent funded. If the state were half of that, they'd be smiling. But that wasn't by chance. That was a dedicated act of both the council and Board of Educations over the last decade, and our unions. The Aspen unions all got together, and the police union too, to change our pension plan to make it more equitable and they're paying a greater share of it. Overdecrease, another $5 decrease to that. We were able to not reduce services. Our grants have been strong. We've had improvements to parks and buildings. Layla Park in particular, we have new soccer field coming online up there in spring. The fund balance is at the council's goal, and moving up, and our bond rating is AA2, which we worked for years on. Unfortunately, due to the state of the state, we're under review again, and we may not be able to hold on to that, which is very disheartening after all the efforts on everybody to not overestimate revenues or overspend budgets. So all of these things are team approaches that we've taken affirmative action to make happen. Personnel expenses changed. I mentioned the wage fees for six months. I mentioned health insurance already. There's no new full-time employees in the town, hasn't been for a couple of years. The one part-time employee was a senior center aide, a couple hours, I think it's 12 hours a week to help out because our senior center director can't, coordinator can't answer the phone and be with the seniors, and a lot of the events, when you have 60, 65 people, you really need more than one person. So they do use volunteers there, but we just needed a little bit more stability to get some of the programs out, some of the webs up, updates, and make sure that our senior rides program is functioning. And good announcement, yesterday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, we got our new senior van in. So we're getting it registered, and frankly, it's awesome. I think they're going to really like it. We just have to go through Department of Motor Vehicles, and nobody's raising their hand saying, "I want to stand in line," but we'll get it on the road probably next week. That was 80 percent funded by a federal grant, so it's replacing a six-year-old or seven-year-old van, but it's going to ride a lot smoother. It's one of the new Ford Transit chassis, which is just a lot smoother, and great visibility, which is good for the volunteer drivers. So personnel services makes up 71 percent of our budget. Fortunately, it went down, so. Capital budget went down a little bit, we're trending, we're still trending up, but if you adjust for inflations, we're still about where we were in 1995. Quick go-round of capital expenditures. Summer road program is matched with some town acre road. We got about $300,000, so we bought a $570,000 annual road program. We're trying to stretch that out. I know people think we're jumping all over the place, but this is a very difficult year. The council allowed us to, one of the few capital projects that wasn't frozen, so we keep the roads going this summer, and the last of this, kind of, the last of that money is going to High Street probably next week. School computers is ongoing, the same amount as last year, town hall computer upgrades, classroom furniture, replacement police SUV vehicles. I know people think we have a lot of police cars. We're going to be getting rid of some. We purposely kept them on during the Main Street construction so that when the police officers were there and the cars were idling, we were idling a car that was seven or eight or nine years old, so we weren't burning up our new cars, and we, so they were held over on purpose so you'd see, yeah, there's a lot of cars there, but part of it is, at times, it needed two vehicles. So we're getting rid of some of the old Crown Rex that you see. So there was a lot of what we do, and people notice it, and it's not bad to notice it, but there's reasons for a lot of what we do, and by the way, when they're working those hours, they're not being paid by us, they're being paid by the contractor, and the contractor's also paying for that vehicle separately. And those funds go into an account that we can draw in and buy other police equipment for, to help out their car. So a lot of questions get raised over time, we're always glad to answer them. I put out my email address. I get very few emails or phone calls from people asking questions. If you really want an answer, you're more than welcome to call or email me versus just asking Facebook. Because you'll get many answers on Facebook. Maybe one of them will be right, but you won't know which one it is. Scott Air packs for the fire and hose, that's a slight reduction. Over last year, we used to have $10,000 for both those, that was combined. Fire gear, we have to replace a lot of the uniforms that have a life, the turn-up gear. We have to start, open space funds the same as it has been the last couple of years. We unfortunately have to start revaluation, that'll be a multi-year process, so we're funding the first year of the three-year program for that. CNREF is a reserve fund for expenses. $90,000 of that is committed to help pay for our natural gas, high-end plant and conservation development. There's also an unfunded state mandate that we do that every 10, 10 years, so our 10 years is coming up. The Planning and Zoning Commission is already working on that. School kitchen replacement equipment, floor refinishing for school gyms, we've done, one of two was done this summer. School parking lot resealing, if you drive through a couple of parking lots in some of schools that need crack ceiling, we're going to lose all of it, and we'll have to rip it out and replace it like we had to in the back parking lot here, so we're trying to stop that. And then lake management is to start, start dealing with the ongoing issues of fan war the state of Hydrilla. Next year, we're able to skip the fan war treatment at Eagleville. We've done it for three years, we think we've made a good aggressive hit, and we can take a year off and watch it and see what the effects are, but the state has told us that due to their fiscal issues, that next year, they probably won't be able to fully fund the Hydrilla. So that won't cover the whole Hydrilla treatment either, but it will save this money, this money can carry over for three years. We'll match this money up with money next July, and we should be able to cover at least a portion if the state can, but we have to keep doing the Hydrilla. Other funds, we have a series of other funds when people rent Patriots Park buildings, there's a Patriots Park Fund, so $5,000 will come out of that park, out of that, and go back into the park for building repairs. Tower equipment, we rent space on our radio tower behind the town hall. $25,000 of the $50,000 we earn in rent goes to the operating budget to offset taxes, and $25,000 pays for police, fire, public works radios and cell phones for our employees. So we thought it was appropriate that, Verizon pays us $25,000, and then we pay money back to Verizon, but, and, but a lot of our radio, we still have radios and they're at tubes. If tubes go, we have to like call somebody in Russia to get them. Cemetery wall repairs, some of the big walls along the lake need work, and they're doing some of that now out of their funds, but we also have the one section of the wall on Lake Street needs to be worked, and those are those big blocks we fund. Over the years, one year, they just slumped it, we found them in the road. Two years ago, we fixed one section, and now we have to keep moving on. Tire change equipment for public works out of funds, miscellaneous highways funds, an account where when they sell off equipment, it goes back into the miscellaneous highway funds to allow them to buy equipment. And our fuel dispensing equipment is located for all town fleet, police, fire, ambulance in town. At the firehouse across the street, the gas boy system is 17 years old, the company doesn't exist anymore, and it's got a modem that goes "Eeeehhh." So we got to get past that and get a new system. And ambulance replacement, when the CVFA turned the ambulance over to town, they turned over their bank account with it, and with that and some savings out of last year's budget through the EMS fund, we're able to buy a new ambulance out of that fund and not directly out of taxpayers. So we have a committee that Ray Eldridge is leading up, and they're ready to come forward with the recommendations, so if the budget passes, we'll be able to place the order, but it doesn't come from taxation. Our ambulances are getting old, one of them in particular has been very troublesome. This one will be a slightly different style ambulance, it'll be kind of a four-wheel-drive pickup truck with a box behind it, similar to one that Mansfield and Caballero Towns have it, so it'll be eat better, serve to handle New England weather in the winter. So the five-person committee's been spending a couple months on this, and we're actually purchasing it out of a governmental consortium out of Texas called HGAC, Houston Galveston Area Consortium. So they're already pre-priced, largest, you know, largest brakes by anyone in the country because they buy so many bodies and chassis through them. But fortunately, one of our local dealers in Eastwood, Connecticut, is part of that consortium, so we're able to just go and buy it, it's already prepaid. So that's how we bought a tanker truck last year, that was $200,000 less than our neighbors of Bolton in Mansfield, so we keep looking for bargains on your behalf. So debt service, again, going down. I think it's worth noting, over here, you know, we're going into this year, slight decrease. Next year, we have a slight increase, and then after that, in 1920, you start seeing the steep decline because the school buildings are being paid off. So as we get into other presentations, you can kind of see, without increasing taxes, if we have projects that are worth going forward, debt service, we have the capacity without raising taxes to do that. The reason next year's going up is a lot of the coupons are sold in five-year increments with different interest rates, so it's just a matter of how those coupons, a lot of times at short end, they give low interest upfront, and to entice people to buy longer, they give a interest upfront and to entice people to buy longer, they give a little bit more interest later on because there are, people are buying for usually a ten-year to twenty-year period. They wanna know that they're not stuck with buying today's interest earnings, you know, if they think inflation's gonna kick in sometime. So I think we've gone through most of that. Just to be clear, note on the bottom, there's no debt service in the library included in this budget. If it passes, the first debt would be, probably be in that nineteen-twenty-year increase because we probably, again, if it passes, we would probably do some short-term borrowing because we don't need all the money in the first year because all we need really is design funds. So we either borrow from ourselves or go forward. So the first time that real debt would hit would be the first year of the reduction. Budget vote, stuck to a Tuesday, just as you do. Back to the firehouses. I'll say it again, back to the firehouses, not the schools. So absentee ballots will be available on Monday. We couldn't have them available till you have a town, town meeting here and decide what the amount would be. And just a note, it's also Thanksgiving, so we're not there on Thursday or Friday. So come in on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, or the following Monday. They have to be done in person because it's a short notice and per state law. We can't mail them. So if you have any questions, call the town clerk's office and I'm walking through all the requirements for that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Paterno.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I wanna start out by recognizing the Board of Education members that are in attendance today. We have our board chair, Jennifer Bosale, our vice chair, Jean Marchand, our secretary, Mary Mina Hadalief, she's doing dual duty as a mom, watching the play tonight. We have Mary Courtman, Bill Oros, and our newest member, Peter Larson. So welcome to our folks here and welcome everyone else who took the time to be here on a Friday night. This past February, the Board of Education went back and looked at their mission statement and they also looked at the three goals that they developed five years ago this past February. And they wanted to determine whether these goals and this mission statement are still relevant. We worked together in a little retreat. We looked at these goals, we thought about a lot of where the district needed to go. And it was determined that these goals and the mission statement are still appropriate and really identified where the Board of Education needed to go in order to serve our children going forward. And something I've always said often is that we wanna create a through line from the classroom to the Board of Education so it's clear to everyone whether they're working in the classroom, the parents in the community, Board of Education members, administration, exactly where the district is going and why it's important. Our enrollment, if you search the internet or look at some of the recent research that's out there, it's very clear that the enrollment in Connecticut is declining. And as a matter of fact, there was a recent article published that it's declining faster than, I think, forty-eight other states in the state of Connecticut. There are pockets, urban districts and other pockets in the state of Connecticut where the enrollment isn't declining that fast, as fast, excuse me, or it's stabilized or it's actually increasing. We're fortunate that our enrollment is, for the most part, maintaining steady levels. And if you remove the preschool from last year to this year, we're just down only two students. So if you remove the preschool from the equation, just look at us as a K-12 district, which we're not anymore, but if you do that, you'll see that we're only down two students from last year to this year, which is really well. Special education is always an area of challenge and it's one of the biggest drivers in any Board of Education budget. It's one of the most challenging parts of the budget as well because it's very unpredictable. A student can move in tomorrow, they can move out tomorrow, and this will significantly or could potentially significantly impact the budget either way, either plus or minus. So it's something that we're always aware of. An example of that is you'll notice that there's an increase from last year to this year, actually this past year. And the reason for that is we have five students move into district that have needs that require them to not be serviced in our district. So despite the efforts we've made over the last several years to develop programs in our district to keep students here, because I'm a big believer that students should be educated in their community, there's still situations that require them sometimes to be serviced outside of our community. And that is an area which we'll continue to work toward. We're developing our autism program because our autism population is increasing greatly. Our alternative ed population continues to increase, so we're trying to service these children in our district. Again, we started the academy several years ago when I moved it off-site, which is outside, I actually put in the wrong direction, outside of the auditorium in our former maintenance building. We started with six students, we're up to nineteen students. So we're able to bring all those students back and provide support for them here in district. Our autism population continues to increase. There was two or three students only two years ago and now we're up to fourteen students at the K-five level. So we're working really hard to develop these programs to keep these students in our schools because we feel like we can provide the best programs for these individuals. And we continue to work at that, we continue to refine that. And if you look at my goals, that's one of the areas of focus for me and for the district as well. And I think we've done a really good job of that. Sometimes people will say we spend too much money. So let's look at the facts. The facts are that if you look at our DIRG, District Reference Group, we are ranked twenty-six out of thirty-three as far as how much money we're spending on students. If you look at us at the state level, we're one oh one out of one sixty-six. So we're far from the top of our DIRG as far as how much money we're spending per pupil. What have we accomplished over the last five years? We've accomplished so much and I think it's worth just spending a minute and looking at this because the Board of Education has, in my opinion, put the resources into the right areas. As a result, we've been able to experience a lot of success. And here's a list, I'm not gonna go through and read this list to you. There's packets outside of the lecture hall. You're welcome to grab those, some of you I see have them. And you can look at how much we've accomplished over the last five years and it's quite a bit and there's a lot to be proud of and you should be proud of the schools in the community of which you reside. Historically, we've come in, despite all these accomplishments, despite the establishment of programs that are better servicing our kids, we still come in with very conservative budgets. So you might say, why does this one year stand out? Why is there an outlier there? There's an outlier there because that was the one year we had sixteen percent increase in our insurance. That's the reason. Other than that, you can see our budgets have been very, very conservative over a number of years. That is really our focus and really a point of pride, to be honest with you, because we find ways to do more with less. And that's by really looking at the data and use that data to inform our decision-making. And using that data to inform our decision-making allows us to put the money in the right places and get better results. Special education out of district placements, I touched on this briefly, but you can see there's a slight increase over here in those where the students that I told you that moved in mid-year. You can't plan for those students. We start developing, believe it or not, I'm working on the fiscal year nineteen budget, even though we're talking about fiscal year eighteen budget right now. I'm already working on next school year's budget. And it's hard to predict because we need to take a snapshot of where we currently are with our special education students. And so we incorporate those students in our budget. There are no placeholders. We don't do that. Many, many years ago, a couple decades ago, a lot of districts used to do that because they would know that special education students can move in or out and they didn't want these huge swings in the budget. So sometimes they would put placeholders in the budget. We do not have any placeholders. Every student is accounted for that is currently in the district. We don't try to predict where we're gonna be two years from now, a year from now. We base it on the current information that we have. Why is this slide important? It's important because when we talk about budget reductions, sometimes we think about maybe a teacher that is at the higher end of the salary range. But in reality, when you talk about laying off or cutting positions, more often than not, it's the person that is new to the profession that is let go or laid off. And the majority of our staff over the last several years has retired and as a result of retiring, we have many, many new staff in our building. That's a good thing, new energy into the building. We were sad to see our senior staff go because there's a lot of history and a lot of knowledge that goes out the door, but we're excited about, you know, working with new staff. But to that point, to further that, sometimes you'll hear people talk about vacancy savings. And what that means is you include the salaries for every employee in the district in your budget. So say, for example, someone leaves that makes seventy thousand dollars a year, you develop the budget based on that person still being in the district. They decide to retire after the budget's gone to referendum and you hire someone new and add fifty thousand dollars a year. So now you have twenty thousand dollars savings there, okay? And that's called vacancy savings, for those who are not familiar with it. I bring that up because in the event that we have staff leave, the majority of our staff is at the lower end of the salary schedule, meaning that there's not that vacancy savings sometimes that can occur. So we run a really, really tight budget. So when people come and go, sometimes we actually end up spending more than we budgeted for based on the need, if it's a math or a science teacher or another shortage area, special education's another shortage area. You tend to sometimes have to hire people at the higher end of the salary table because they have more experience. The show funding sources, one area that I thought was untapped when I came on board as a superintendent, as I started my eighteenth year and just looking back, I said, you know, we need to figure out how to bring more resources into the district without putting it on the back of the taxpayers because that's not the answer. You can see we come in with conservative budgets. So I needed to work really quickly with the board to figure out how we could bring additional funding into the district. And it would be easy for me to wring my hands and say, geez, we don't have a lot of money, we can't do, we can't do, we can't do. That was not the answer that was acceptable to me. So we put together many different groups of teachers and we went after a lot of grant funding that's out there. So you can look at the amount of money we've taken or secured, I should say, over the last three years and it's two-point-seven million dollars we've secured over the last three years in grant funding. This has allowed us to do so much. You look at our preschool program, which is funded greatly through the Smart Start Grant. You look at some of the technology grants that we received, the security grants, the list goes on and on. I'm not gonna read it to you, it's there for your review. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have related to those grants. I also have a sheet that'll explain each one of these grants in more detail, if you'd like that as well. But again, this is an area that I felt was untapped and we've done a really good job. And, you know, we've even gone after grants and we've even secured grants as low as four-hundred dollars, three-hundred dollars. You'll see that here because every little bit, and it sounds silly, but it's so true, does really make a difference. When we originally developed this budget, we again, wanted to come in conservative. You've heard me say that a lot tonight. We cut one-point-two-four FTEs, okay, from the budget. Additional June reductions, after, you know, trying to compete with the challenges at the state level, another six-point-six-two positions were reduced. Special education, three-point-six-two. Net FTE impact was almost eleven and a half positions were cut. So what does this look like? It looks like this. This is how many different positions were impacted. If we have parents out here tonight, you'll know that your child's art teacher may have moved from one school to another school. We had several staff that had to move from one school to another school. That's the way the union works when you're reducing certain positions and how it needs to play out. So as you can imagine, when you look at this list, and I think there's about twenty different positions on here, when you look at twenty different positions that are impacted, there's a lot of disruption and it can cause challenges in many different ways that you may not think of normally. So with that said, again, there's a list for your review, I'm not gonna go through, but I wanted you to have that visual to see the impact that these budget reductions had on the system as a whole. And again, what was impacted? So sometimes, you know, you may be aware of your child's art teacher moving or their first grade teacher's position being eliminated, but there's other things that were eliminated as well. We service kids and support families in a lot of different ways. We have our temporary media center right up the hallway that's open after school and we have anywhere from forty to sixty students staying after school, working together collaboratively, having a homework, quiet space, having a safe space to go because maybe no one's home at that moment. It's an opportunity for them to work on projects, have access to technology, a variety of different opportunities for them as well. Homework club at GHR. And again, I'm not gonna read the list to you here, but you can see the programs, the classes that were cut as well from the board's budget. So what does it look like in a snapshot? This is what it looks like here, just to give you an idea of the areas that were impacted when you look at those major categories in our budget. Budget challenges and the effect that it has on country. So I gave you a quick little summary, but I'll just give you a little quick timeline and I'll walk you through it. I came in at one-point-seven percent increase. The board worked very hard, went literally line by line and ultimately ended up coming in at one-point-eight-six. So they cut my budget just ever so slightly. However, there was a lot of information coming out at the state level and a lot of information that made people nervous and rightfully so. They should have been nervous. And at one point, we were told that we should take out excess costs, which is related to special ed. If you want more information about that, I'd be happy to give it to you, but it's a revenue source for us. We removed that from our budget and that ultimately ended up increasing our budget to four-point-six-nine. So it wasn't like we came in with this big, heavy budget and wanted to add positions. It was something that had been in the budget historically for many, many, many years. And at that point, it was determined, working with the town and the board, that we would take that out of our budget. Ultimately, fast forwarding, by the time June came around, we knew that we were gonna end up with a one-point-two-million-dollar cut from the board's budget. And I showed you where some of those areas were that were impacted. Ultimately, and John also talked about this, we are down ninety-six thousand dollars from last year's budget. That's a lot of money. When you think about just the standard increases that employees may get, the different needs that the schools have, the resources that we should be putting in the hands of our kids. So the local impact of these reductions. So often, we'll make these cuts and some of you may be sitting there thinking that, geez, they took one-point-two-three million dollars in cuts. The lights are on, the teachers are there, kids are smiling, buses are running. But I've been here eighteen years and I will tell you that when you make those kind of cuts, it's the things that you can't see that get impacted. So I wanted to give you a quick flashback before we talk about how much progress we've made to give you an idea because as I said, I've been here long enough to tell you that I've lived through lots of cuts. Historically, we've been very conservative with our budgets. Ten years ago, grade four, I just given you a couple snapshots here. The data looks exactly the same if you go to grade three, five, seven, it looks the same, but this is a quick snapshot. Grade four, we're ranked twenty-one out of twenty-eight in math, twenty-four out of twenty-eight in reading, twenty-eight out of twenty-eight in math in grade six, twenty-two out of twenty-eight in grade six in reading, twenty-four out of twenty-four in math and twenty-three out of twenty-four in reading. So if you think these cuts don't matter, please, I would urge you to think again. Our kids deserve better. One of the things that I've said over and over and over again, I don't care what community you live in, that we have to make sure that our kids can compete with every other kid in the state of Connecticut across the country. And that's what they deserve, that's what you deserve as parents. Science, nineteen out of twenty-seven in grade five and science is only tested in grade five and grade eight, which is why I've included these two grades here, nineteen out of twenty-five in science. So when I came on board, the one thing that I felt was really important, of course, is to have a plan. You can't do anything without a plan, right? Makes sense. We called it a district improvement plan initially. Why? Because we needed to create a sense of urgency. And I showed you why we needed to create a sense of urgency. The board got behind us, they understand, they understood the work that needed to be done and they focused again, the resources in the right areas. Now we call it a strategic plan. We've done the work. We've had the success. We are being recognized as a lighthouse district. For a small town, that's significant. So is this plan working? Let's, let's look forward six years later, I'm starting my seventh year. Is it working? We're honestly ranked the top, near the top in our DIRD. I'll show you. We are eighth out of thirty-three on the Smarter Balance Assessment in English Language Arts. Right, remember where we were ten years ago? We're here. Now we're here. Math, eighth out of thirty-three in our DIRD. Good stuff. Can't get higher than one. Can't get higher than one. And look, fourth out of 20 in grade eight. We've come a long way. We've worked harder. Someone recently was asking me, they came to town 20 years ago and they said, I remember what the school system used to be like. It's a great school system, but I knew it needed some work. What was the one thing you did? How did this happen? How did, what was the one thing you did? It wasn't one thing. It was really just pooling together, working together as a team. And there was many different pieces in that strategic plan that I just told you about that really got us to this point. CAPS is going away, but the last time we were tested, we're three out of 13 in the DIRG. Advanced placement, number of students that are taking advanced placement courses and taking the exam continues to be extremely high. Talk about credits earned. For those of you who have children, many of you do out there, you understand the importance of saving for college. You also probably had a lot of sleepless nights thinking about how much college costs. I know I do. I got a dog in college. 575 credits, MCC, Community College Credits were earned last year. Early College Experience Credits earned at the University of Connecticut, 447. You know how much money that is? Our kids are leaving, they're graduating a semester early, half a semester early, they're saving a lot of money. As parents, I'm sure you could appreciate that. The Chronicle decided that they were going to compare us to all the surrounding towns. Even though our DIRG's different, they're going to compare us to our surrounding towns. So you can look at where we are at ELA. You can look at some of the towns that are around us, and we're number two. We're a little over a percentage point for being number one. Far as math is concerned, you can see we're fifth as far as surrounding towns again. This is one that I like a lot because, again, I can say this because I've been here a long time and I worked in the school, so I feel it's okay for me to say this, is that we used to get beat up pretty bad by some of these towns that are listed here, guys. I think you'll agree, if you've been in town long enough, you know that. Now we're beating them. And we should be proud that we're beating them or outperforming them. It's okay to be competitive, it's good, it's healthy. When you look at towns that are around us, so you look at Bolton, now you look at how much they're spending per student and you look at how much we're spending per student. You take their number minus our number from it, okay? And you use that balance and times about a number of students that we have, they're spending over $2 million more on their students, dollar for dollar, than we are. And either we're darn close to them or we're beating them. You take Mansfield, right up the road, even though I don't like being compared to Mansfield or Bolton because we're a DIRG E, they're a DIRG C. Again, if I apply the same formula to Mansfield, it's over $4 million more on their students than we're spending. And look at the results that we're getting. S-BAC, again, related to ELA, you can see our performance here again. Well exceeding the state. Outperforming Bolton, outperforming Arlington, outperforming Tomlin, West Hartford.
What does ELA stand for?
English Language Arts, good question. Accolades. I'd love to make you sit here so I could read all of these because you have a lot to be proud of, but I won't torch you, I promise. I appreciate that you're here tonight. But there is so much that we've accomplished again, and we're being recognized for our accomplishments at the state level, regional level, and national level. Small newspaper called The Washington Post ranked our high school number eighth in the state as most challenging high schools. Student accolades, lots here to be proud of as well. I'm always proud of our kids. I was able to see our kids' work, our artwork showcased at the CAPE CAPS convention today. Again, outstanding. You heard me say this already, we're viewed as a lighthouse district now. That always wasn't the case. And again, I worked here, I know how hard and how far we've come to be viewed this way. Other districts are coming to us, those who in the past have outperformed us and want to know more about the programs we develop, they want to know more about how we're getting the results we're getting, they want to know how we're preparing our students for the 21st century challenges. I talked a lot about the plan and the importance of the plan, and we need to stay true to that plan. If we're going to continue to impact student achievement, we need to stay true to our plan. And this is the time during these difficult budget challenges that we have to remember that and to try and do the best we can with the resources that we have. I included, I'm not going to read these to you either, I promise, but in your packet, there's some thoughts from parents that they shared with me over the last couple of years about how proud they were of the system and what the system did for their kids. I've also included some information that, you know, our students sent in to us over the years. Unsolicited, just emails that we get. And I can't stress this enough, a goal without a plan is just a wish. And I was here when we used to wish that we could do better. When I took over at the Robertson School many years ago, the first gift I got was a letter from the state of Connecticut the summer I started telling me that we did not make AYP, Adequate Early Progress. And we were cited for being low in our instructional hours in math, low in our instructional hours in reading, high in our instructional hours in art, high in our instructional hours in PE. Two years later, middle school got that same letter. Not anymore. That's not going to happen anymore. We can't have it happen anymore. I won't let it happen anymore. So we're going to work really hard, we want your support for this budget, we're going to do everything we can do to maintain the programs we have, but you can see some have been impacted. Our hope is that we can continue to slowly rebound from this and find creative ways to put the resources in the hands of our kids. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, John and Dave. Okay, on to item two. To consider and take action on the town council's recommendation for the 2017-2018 fiscal year appropriation pursuant to section 9-1 of the town charter, the final vote shall be adjourned by the moderator to November 28, 2017, as John said earlier. And that's general government, $9,612,418. Board of Education, $27,44,684. Debt service, $2,724,073. Capital expenditures, $932,800 for a total appropriation of $40,313,975. Is there a motion to that effect? Yes, give your name and address.
Lisa Thomas, 255 Geraldine Drive. Mr. Moderator, I move at this annual town meeting, approve the town council's recommendation for the 2017-2018 fiscal year appropriations follows. General Government, $9,612,418. Board of Education, $27,44,684. Debt Service, $2,724,073. And capital expenditures, $932,100 for a total appropriation of $40,313,975.
Is there a second? Yes, give your name and address.
General Health 4605, Park Street, Convent, Good South Society.
Okay, thank you. So motions are moved and seconded. Now we're going to have discussions. What we're going to do is move the mic over here. And anybody who wants to speak should line up over there. Go right ahead. Anybody else who wants to speak, it might be more convenient or faster if you kind of line up behind her.